Okay, we'll call a meeting as ordered. Meeting of the Young County Commissioners' Court is a regular meeting, Monday, August 26, 2013, and it's about 9:31 a.m. If it's convenient, please stand.
I plead with allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On this flag, I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Okay, the course that on our agenda today is a public hearing. This is a budget adoption hearing. We've got a budget here that calls for $9,411 more tax revenue than did the last budget, and that calculates out to .165 percent increase. Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak with regard to the matter of the budget? A rollback rate calculated at .590865. And we have a proposed rate in this FY14 budget of .509569, or maintenance operating, and .079837 on the debt service rate for a total of .589406, which is slightly under the rate that we charged last year of .150168. Is there being no comment from the public? Is there any member of the court who wishes to address the question? Sit on this plate. Three eight four. Justice score the number one more time. Let me do that. We have that listed on the agenda as .589406, but we correct that. I guess that was corrected after we posted it. But that figure is .589384, which is slightly under the rate that we charged last year of .150168. Is there any member of the court who would address the question? Third law, then I entertain a motion to adopt this budget. That motion will be made, will read, uh, Jimmy Wiley. Move to adopt this budget, Young County, Texas, as presented this 26th day of August 2013, and to become effective upon October 1, 2013, for the fiscal year 2014 budget. Second, Mr. Rogers. All in favor, Mr. Seitz?
Aye.
Mr. Brud?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Wiley?
Aye.
And I will go on the board. of the tax increase, of which as calculated in the budget, there's $9,411 increased revenue from property taxes this year, and had a .165 percent increase. Motion will state that this budget will require raising portion of revenue from property tax that is a remittance year. Who wants to make that motion?
What's your hope that it is exactly $1 per?
That's what they calculate now, $1 for $100,000 back. We all in favor, Mr. Seitz?
Aye.
Mr. Brud?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Wiley?
Aye.
And I will go on the board. by, prove that the property tax rate for maintenance and operations be set at .509547 for $100 back. So moved. Second. All in favor of that? I don't think there's anyone opposed. The next order of business will be to establish a maintenance operations rate that is set by, prove that the property tax rate for maintenance and operations be set at .509547 for $100 back. I'm saying that. We have motion by Mr. Wiley and second by Mr. Seitz. All in favor?
Aye.
No opposition? Okay, file. Motion will be that, uh, move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of .589384, which is effectively a 8.49 percent increase from last year's tax rate. That's based upon the effective rate that we calculated here. Do we have second? Well, I'm for the United States of America.
We talked about that just this morning, yeah, by the way that the sheet figures up the effective tax rate.
And those are the numbers we've been visiting about, actually.
Yes.
That's a relationship between the effective tax rate and what we've charged and what our proposed tax rate is this year, and I'm pretty impressed with that. It doesn't have anything to do with what the rollback rate is.
If it figures that effective, you know, if we blow what the effective was figured once within the calculations on it, it's like, until that point, it's not that much over the tax rate we had last year, but figured effective.
I'll put my second on that. This is .89, that's right.
Right, but it's an increase of what the sheet figured the effective rate at.
That's the rate it's figured at, .400 last year.
No, this rate is, but not the effective rate from the appraisal office next year. Because last year-
Cheryl ran through the, moved, ran through me.
The tax rate was adopted in-
Yeah, Thomas. I've got my second on that. All in favor of that? Let's do this one. Mr. Seitz?
Aye.
Mr. Brud?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Wiley?
Aye.
And myself. Okay, folks, we have a budget adopted. You have the other group. Everybody have the, get one. Is there any other matter with regard to the hearing of the budget that this could be brought to? If not, I'll entertain a motion to amend this public hearing. Mr. Wiley? Second. Second by Mr. Seitz. All in favor of any of this public hearing, uh, carried by the one. Okay, the next order of business, item number four, because a public hearing of the court is to consider an application to cancel all or a portion of the DeLong subdivision pursuant to Texas Local Code 232, that subdivision being in and around the community of Lisle. Application is brought by Bob Farde and June Mark. Is there anyone here in opposition or that wants to protest effective cancellation? It's been published as required by 232.008C, the lower level code. It ran in the ground later on July 31st, August 7th, August 14th, for three weeks running as prescribed by 232. The purpose of cancellation is to secure a title on a 4.024 acre tract, more or less. It was never developed so as to reestablish the property as acre tracts as before the land was subdivided. There's no one here to oppose such cancellation? I'll move that the court find that such application does not interfere with the established rights of any owner or purchaser of that part of the DeLong subdivision to the community of Lisle, Texas, such as described in the application, and hereby authorize the owner to file an instrument of cancellation of the described portion of said subdivision. Yeah, the second by Mr. Wiley. On such order, they entered into the minutes of the court, and we feel right here by authorize Bob Farde and June Mark to file that instrument that will cancel that portion of the subdivision described within the application. We need voting on the motion? We did vote on it, did. All in favor?
Aye.
Carry. Yes, sir. No opposition? Okay. I'll move that this hearing on the application, Bob Farde and June Mark. Be close. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, let's take care of that.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment that may maybe be brought to the attention of the court or any announcement that might maybe be brought?
I want to thank you for the hard work on the budget, being patient with me.
Ma'am?
Thank you for the hard work on working the budget out and for being patient with you.
This, did this follow together exactly like everyone wants it to? If I might say, my first experience at budgeting the funds for this county has been educational in the minimum. It's been, the understanding of how to fund government through the pockets of our taxpayers is a very sensitive question, difficult to do at times. Don't you know, I think we came up with a fairly good budget, and it was one of a lot of compromises, and we didn't do a lot of things we'd like to do. We did some things we probably look back on and we could have done a little better, but I think it's a good budget. I appreciate it. The education and all that you gave me too. Cheryl, thank you very much from the office office. Very good. Okay, anybody else who wants one of these, they'll be on, they'll be on our website shortly. They'll be posted on our website, and then there will be a copy of one on the desk of the county clerk, county doc, or inspector, whatever, might wish to inspect that, and that's small of the, and have a copy of it. Item number six, consider county clerk minutes from previous meetings, August 19, 2013. Are there any additions, corrections, or corrections? So. Second. Motion by Mr. Wiley and second by Mr. Rogers. Approve those minutes as presented, all in favor?
Aye.
Carry. Item number seven, consider the trade of fines before-
The books are bound for July. The overall cash balance in operating is $7,203,000 change. Current cash position is about $200,000 for that.
Any motion to, uh, present the trade of fines before best to see? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Carry. Item number five, consider all the budget amendments or about, all in favor?
This, $182,996, and out of that, $172,289, it was out of the general, small amounts under $1,000 out of present.
So moved. Mr. Wiley and second by Mr. Brud, approve payment of bounty as presented, all in favor?
Aye.
Carry. Item number 19, consider Young County a price, uh, to request for refund to Richard Steeves, $20, pending cause of ownership here. So moved. Second. I have motion by Mr. Seitz, second by Mr. Rogers to approve that request on Thursday. Item number 11, consider rescinding previous court action, item number seven, dollars, filed 2013, Florida County District, uh, records archives, maintenance fee of $10 effective September 1st. It's come to my attention that even though that people became effective, becomes effective September 1st, the authorization, another provision in the code doesn't allow the charge to move five to $10 until, uh, the 1st of January, 2014. So- This is off of the proper collection date? I guess that's basically what that is, is we, I jumped the gun, I guess, a little bit, thinking it's, we get right on the ball, and we did, and I think a lot of other counties did too. There's been questions and authorizations, uh, control of public accounts, I believe that's the authority, has the authority to establish that date, and I believe that date's been established at, um, January 1, for the increase. Will that move to rescinding previous court action taken on item seven, August 5, 2013, regarding county and district records archive maintenance fee of $10 effective September 1, 2013? I have motion by Mr. Seitz, second by Mr. Wiley, to rescind that previous action on the increase, uh, archived maintenance fee, all in favor?
Aye.
Carry. Now likewise, I think that would then order them to turn back around and, uh, consider the county and district records archives maintenance fee and records preservation fee to be established at $5 currently, and to be increased then on January 1. Is it by state statute? Do we have to? Yeah, technically, yeah. So moved. Second. Motion by Mr. Seitz, second by Mr. Wiley, to reestablish that fee at $5 until January 1, 2014, at such time to be increased to $10. All in favor?
Aye.
Carry. Five of them. Uh, there was also a recommendation that we make- There was also recommended that we make a statement on the budget, I think on the budget recap. Thanks for, uh, the bottom of the budget recap sheet, you'll find it, it says on January one, two thousand fourteen, county and district records archives fees shall be increased at five dollars. Recommended to be included. But that's, that's, that's all about eight or ten down. About that, about the next or last page before the actual voting starts. Judge?
Thank you.
Item number thirteen, consider order creating county elections administrator. Have it in your packet back there. It says by the authority granted under section thirty-one point oh thirty-one, Texas Elections Code, we, the other side, being members of the commission's court of young county Texas, to be hereby ordered that the position of county elections administrator be created for said county effective on January one, two thousand fourteen. The county clerk is hereby instructed to send a copy of this order to each member of the county elections commission, secretary of state, controller of public accounts. I believe that that will need to be done within three days of the order. State's done this twenty-sixth day of August, two thousand thirteen, to have any discussion on such issue. I'll move, I'll move that we, this commissioner's court create the office of county elections administrator to be effective on January one, two thousand fourteen. And that such, such administrator may be appointed not to take office before ninety days prior to January one. I have motion by Commissioner, by Judge John Bullock, and second by Commissioner Stacey Rogers, to create such or such office of elections administrator for young county Texas. There any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there any opposition? Where they none, I declare the office of elections administrator be, this status be effective January one, two thousand fourteen. That being Department of Elections, precinct elections judges and ordinance. How is there anything that about that?
Uh, yes, good, uh, I guess I didn't, uh, the, there's a few changes off here. This is the like here in the elections to us. And there are some, some changes, and I don't know, I haven't given this to the west, but if you want to make a note over here, I can tell you what the changes are. Just in precincts, precinct five election judge on Republican side would be Sherri Chetlin instead of Lea Helgins. And precinct seven, instead of being blank, would be Judy Mitchell. I don't tamper, and there is on the pan that didn't realize this was going to be the , uh, should have, uh, precinct twenty is vacant at the moment, at this time, Judy Mitchell, I mean Judy Miller, uh, is not going to be able to serve. She's living out of, out of the county. Okay, would like those, oh, changes, is there anything, any other changes there on that? I'm trying to think, I think everything else, uh, I believe everything else is correct. West Volverness was supplying that the Lakers now. The Volverness judge on the seat ran here today. Things are subject to change and modification up till, up here in the next time. I move that we appoint such risk as that if any was any, as Young County precinct elections judges and officers.
Second. All in all, it's that officers. All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
So population, all prices, tracks to them. There's time to, 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 to relations. I believe that has the, making for that. Motion by Commissioner Wiley? Second by Commissioner Pruitt? All in favor?
Aye.
No opposition?
He does seem kind of abbreviated.